Good evening. It's 6:30. Welcome, everyone, to Melville School District May 16, 2024 School Board Meeting. I'd like to call the meeting to order if we could please stand and say the Pledge of Allegiance. Where's the flag? One moment. Tori.
No.
Okay, Steve. Okay. Thank you. Okay.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Okay. Okay, now I'm going to do a roll call. Tori Belkey.
Present.
Scott Hugrich is not here. Patrick McKelvey not here. Jean Preto.
Here.
Jeff Wolman.
Present.
Grace Wright.
Here.
And I'm Peggy Hassler. If I could please get a motion to approve the agenda as presented.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Motion carries 5-0. Communications, recognition of staff, students, and community volunteers. First, we have the Ameren Missouri Biz Savers.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Jessica Papillo, Director of Communications for Melville School District, and I have the pleasure of introducing Matt Farwig of Ameren, Missouri, to talk about the tremendous savings the district has realized through the Ameren Missouri Biz Savers Program.
Good evening, everyone. Thank you. So as mentioned, my name is Matt Farwig, and I'm with the Ameren Missouri Biz Savers Program. Also a resident here of the district and a year 2000 graduate of Melville High School. My wife is a graduate of Oakville, but we don't hold that against her too much. But enough about me. I'm here to talk about the district and the extraordinary lengths you guys have gone through to become more energy efficient and save the residents of the district on energy cost while reducing your carbon footprint. If you're not familiar with the Biz Savers Program, we basically pay cash incentives for upgrading energy-efficient equipment. That typically includes LED lighting and HVAC equipment. The program's been around since 2009, and in that time, you've applied for and completed 113 projects that have received incentive payments. The total energy for those completed projects is 4,950,981 kilowatt hours. If you're not familiar with that, what that means, to show the impact, the average US home uses about 10,000 kilowatt hours of energy per year, excuse me. So the projects that you have completed is the equivalent of removing 495 homes off the grid and never having them use energy again. So extremely impactful. The amount of incentives received so far, this is again just for your completed projects, is $864,630, which is what we've got the check for here tonight, and that's accumulative since the program started. The annual energy cost savings for the district versus if you had not done anything and continue to run that old, inefficient equipment would cost an additional $495,098 on your electric bill. So that's how much accumulatively you've reduced your bill by making these upgrades. And those projects have included LED lighting, HVAC equipment, and commercial kitchen equipment. So that's the information on your completed projects, as I'm sure you're all very well aware. You've also got some big upcoming projects for the summer. So thanks to your efforts for continuing to become more energy efficient. I believe we've got 10 projects in the queue for this year, which includes HVAC upgrades as well as building controls upgrades with the guys from ACIS. The 10 projects for this year have an estimated total savings of 1,604,444 kilowatt hours. That's the equivalent of taking 160 homes off the grid and never having them use electricity again. These projects are estimated to save the district $160,000 annually off your Ameren bill. And so it took 15 years for the program, or participation in the program, to earn $864,000. And then the estimated incentives for the projects that you've got coming up this year are estimated to save, or to earn, $479,000 in incentives. So almost half of what it took 15 years to get, you're going to be getting almost half that just this year. So that's excellent. And I do want to give special thanks to some members of the staff. So Russ Suda has been an integral part of the program, always applying for incentives, providing the needed information that we need to earn the incentives and keeping us up to speed on upcoming projects. Last summer, I started working with Katie Gag on Energy Star Commercial Kitchen for the schools, so some savings there as well. And then also want to thank Mike Gag. He's when we're up against deadlines and need information. Mike's been a great resource for us to kind of get the ball rolling and get everybody moving where we need him to go. So special thanks to those folks. And then for all the incentives that we pay out, there's three vital participants. There's you guys, of course, as the customer. Ameren is the Biz Savers incentive provider. And then the final component is our trade outline network, and that's why I invited the guys from ACIS tonight. Between your completed projects and upcoming projects, the district's total incentive amount is estimated to be $1,343,714 by the end of the calendar year. Of that total dollar amount, $981,526 has been submitted on behalf of ACIS. So they've covered about 70, or developed about 73% of your incentive earnings, which is phenomenal. And without their participation and in-depth knowledge of the equipment and high level of detail to quantify the savings, there's a lot of math and calculations that we need to justify the savings. They do a great job of that and always get us the information we need. So I'm joined by Mike Kuntzel and Adam Rustage, and if you guys would like to say anything.
Thank you. My name's Mike Kuntzel. Really, I just wanted to thank you guys on behalf of Automatic Controls, Adam, and myself. We first did our original project in 2017 and have been ongoing, doing more and more work every summer. We have quite a few schools that we're hitting this summer, and then hopefully beyond that, we're going to shout the rest of your district over the next couple of years. It's been phenomenal working with you guys. I know that mentioned Russ Suda, Mike Gag, Patty Crocker, those three names that are always, and basically near and dear to our hearts. They're great at what they do. They make our jobs very easy, and we just love working with you guys. Just want to appreciate you guys and let you know. Thank you very much.
Well, that was all pretty cool information, and I echo what they said about all of our great employees. So thank you, guys, again.
Katie, I just want to let you know that we just informed you that we're right behind Hartley School District. We're number two.
Dang, which is amazing because we're much smaller than our, yeah.
Good. Great. Thank you. All right. Next up, much awaited, obviously, Melville. So are you all presenting?
Yes.
Are you just going to introduce yourself?
Yeah.
Okay, awesome.
They'll introduce when they come up. So I'm Jason Lander. I'm the Building Principal at Melville. Thank you, guys, for giving us the opportunity to be here tonight and to share a little bit about our school year, celebrate a few of our students. So there's a lot of things that we could talk about, from our Special Olympics event to our Panther Project, where our freshmen participated in service learning, where they went out into the community, partnering with different organizations to volunteer on the day of our ACT and workies assessment earlier this year. But typically, at this event, we try to highlight some of our senior class because they're leaving us here in the next few weeks, and we're just really proud of the accomplishments that they've had. So we do have four members of our senior class that'll be joining us here tonight. I'm going to talk about two of those students. Anella Abdianovich is the first one. And Anella is just one of those great all-around people that's involved in about everything that we have to offer here at MHS. She's an officer in International Honor Society. She's a member of the CAPS program, where she's represented us in several different community events. And then she also competes in DECA. So she qualified not only for the state level of DECA, but then international. So she just got back from Anaheim earlier this semester, is in April. So during that trip, we were hosting a Community Partners Breakfast here that John Dewali sponsored, and we had several students participating in a panel. Anella was going to be one, and it just happened to be the week of her trip. And so we were having the breakfast in that panel about 8:30, which I think was about 6:30 or so in Anaheim. And I told her, no big deal, we've got this. And she insisted that she participated. So we set up a Zoom call for her and put her at the end of the panel. So anything that she can do to help, she always does. So we're sad to lose her this year. She's headed off the slough in the fall. But Anella Abdianovich is just one of our, one of our strong seniors here this year. Next, I have Chris Pasalotto is also going to be joining us. Chris is also an officer in NHS, and he's a member of our band program and participates in My Path. You guys might have seen his presentation on engineering earlier at the previous board meeting. Chris, earlier this semester, was recognized as a Missouri 100 Scholars Honorable Mention. So that Missouri 100 program honors the top seniors across the state that excel in academics and their community involvement. So by being an honorable mention, he's in the top 200 of all graduating seniors across the state of Missouri.
I'm Brian Matier. I'm an Assistant Principal here at Melville High School. I have two more of our finest young scholars here. The first one is Ms. Nerma Hersich. Nerma? Thank you. Also known as Queen Midas, everything she touches turns to gold. A three-time state qualifier at three different events in swimming this year. Also third in state at HOSA for Dental Science, where she will be competing in June in Houston as an international qualifier. Nerma has maintained a 4.23 GPA throughout her four years here at Melville High School. All of these reasons and more is why she was this year's St. Louis Post-Dispatch Scholar-Athlete. And then I've got Graham Tapp. Thank you. I'm kidding. There's more. Graham Tapp was also a Missouri Scholars 100 Honorable Mention, an honors band drum leader this year, junior and senior exec the past two years, and making decisions that impact our school. A Green Pit Warrior, also a 4.3 GPA. And Mr. Melville, this is why we wanted to honor Graham Tapp. We have so many young scholars that could, we could have brought up here today. These four happen to stand out amongst many kids who have done a lot of things to make Melville a great place.
Hi, I am Katie Hardrick, another Assistant Principal here at Melville High School. So to start off our staff celebrations, if you look at the top right picture there, we have Tom Harper. Tom is one of our English Language Arts teachers here at Melville. And we're very proud because this year, he was our Teacher of the Year as well as the District Employee of the Year. So Tom actually leads our English Language Arts Department as a co-chair. And then he also works with many students in our EOC interventions as well. Also in that picture, you will see Ms. Elia Busi. She is our Athletic and Activities Administrative Assistant. And Ms. Busi won our Classified Employee of the Year. She does a great job keeping us organized with all things sports and activities related. And she just makes strong relationships here with all staff and students as well. So those are some of our staff celebrations from our Chosen Teacher of the Year and Classified Employee of the Year. Also, if you look at the bottom right picture there, you will see our Golden Panther Award. This year, we had 10 staff members that won the Golden Panther Award. The Golden Panther Award really highlights our staff that is making positive contributions here at Melville High School. And one thing that's very, very special about this award is that the person who is given the Golden Panther Award is chosen by a colleague who was the prior recipient.
Hello, I'm Abby Mikowski, another Assistant Principal here at Melville. I would like to start off by highlighting Mr. Tony Brown. When you're looking at the slide there, he is in the middle and the bottom. Tony is not only just a proud Melville grad, but he is a huge staff member in our building who has made such a big impact on Melville High School. Not only that, he was recognized this year in the state of Missouri and earned the Outstanding Music Educator Award. To highlight on some of the things that Tony has done, this year, he took the band students to New York City, and they got to perform in Central Park. And then of the students that he works with in band, seven of them received gold medals this year in solo and ensemble. So we're really proud to recognize Tony, not only just within our building, but on a state level as well. In the top corner here is something that we're really proud of. Ms. Giuliano and Mr. Robert Mitchell have worked with their students in geometry and construction to not only just design and pitch different items, but they also built items that ended up at our early childhood centers. When I was down in their classrooms, I saw everything from rocking bounce beams to different potting plants that would hold different rocks and sensory items for kids to play with. So it was a really cool opportunity for our kids to do a real-world activity that also benefited our Melville community. And then we'd like to end our staff celebrations by talking about Panthers Present. This year, our staff participated in three different half-days where they got to learn about six different strands of professional development items that all were tied to our SIP goals. On April 24, they shared their learnings with their own coworkers, and we had 22 staff members present. And when we got the survey results back, we saw that 98% of our staff members agreed or strongly agreed that this was impactful for their learning this year. So this just highlights some of the awesome collaboration that our staff has done this year and some of the growth that they've seen and learned from their colleagues here in our building. Thank you.
All right. Congratulations, and you guys are amazing, obviously. Next up is Scott McMullin with Scope.
Good evening, everyone. Scott McMullin. I'm the Director of the Scope Alternative Education Program. We nominated two students for student achievement based on perseverance. One of our students, one of our students, he works over 40 hours a week. He tried to get off work, but he wasn't able to do so. So he's not able to attend, but I will give him his certificate. That student's name is Faro Amatovic. He showed exceptional perseverance. In spite of his heavy workload and outside of school, he was only in our school since our program's only half-day. He was only there half-day. But in spite of his work schedule, he was able to put in extra hours to earn the credits that he needed and also the skill level to pass the high set. So although he's not here, we are extremely proud of him and want to celebrate his achievements. Our next student is Dominic. Dominic was in our school last semester, and in spite of the fact that he only attended Scope half a day, he was enrolled in a full course load. And his courses, you know, weren't easy. I mean, he had, you know, algebra, chemistry, biology, and he made it effortless. I mean, his grades were extremely high. In spite of working 25 to 30 hours a week, he spent time outside of school working on his coursework. And in addition to that, he finished all seven classes, which is amazing. He also, I guess, participated and competed three extra classes. So that's just a testament to his dedication and his time management. And not only was he a breath of fresh air for all of us, he was an inspiration to the other kids that were in his classrooms. Because of our setup, we have students who ranges in age from 12 to 18. And so he was in class with students who were, you know, four or five years younger than him, and he was just a great example for them. So without further ado, I'd like to recognize Dominic Higgins for his exemplary work at Scope. What are you buying at the trip, man? Donuts for me?
It's on.
Egg.
Okay, congratulations, Dominic. We just love, I love, love, love hearing from Mr. McMullin and all about our Scope program. It's one of the best things that Melville has going for our community at large, in my opinion. So congratulations. Okay, next is MNEA, Deanna McKelvey.
Hi, I am Deanna McKelvey, and for the next few weeks, I am President of Melville NEA, and I will be stepping down. But it has been such a wonderful opportunity to serve teachers and to work with all of you and all of our cabinet. So I'm not going anywhere. I'm just not doing this role anymore. So tonight, we are going to be recognizing two students. One is from Scope School. So if the teacher and student could please approach the podium.
Hello, I'm Heather Provence. I'm a teacher at Scope. So it is with great pleasure and admiration that the Melville NEA proudly recognizes Han for her exceptional achievements in both academics and behavior while attending Scope. Han's dedication to excellence is truly commendable as she consistently demonstrates a strong commitment to success in all of her endeavors. Her exemplary attendance, I don't think she's missed a day, and her unwavering diligence to completing all of her coursework while she's there reflects her remarkable work ethic and her determination. Moreover, her kindness and respect towards peers and staff, I mean, she is amazing. She just is very respectful in all aspects to her peers and all of the staff, exemplifies her outstanding character. exemplifies her outstanding character. She's a shining example of integrity and excellence, and she inspires those around her to strive for the best. Her classmates, you know, they, they're learning a lot from her, which is great to see. Her contributions to our school community are invaluable, and we're honored to celebrate her with this award.
Thank you. And now we're going to recognize a student from Melville High School, so if that teacher and student could approach the podium.
Hi, I'm Tina Clark, and I'm a teacher here at Melville High School. This is Lucy Pfister. She's a senior here at Melville High School, and she's an exceptional student. She is representing Melville High School, Student of the Month from the NEA. This past month, you would find her at, or not be able to find her because she's so busy, at a HOSA meeting where she just finished her term as the Vice President of Missouri of HOSA, a Senior Exec Meeting, a Special Olympic Steering Committee Meeting, a Student Council Meeting, A-plus tutoring, or at a National Honor Society Meeting. You might also be able to find her in the Melville Media Room as she is the Executive Producer for Melville Media this year. To add to this very busy schedule, she's also a two-sport athlete. Her varsity soccer season just ended, and previously this year, she was on the varsity basketball team. All of this, plus she's been able to maintain a 4.2 cumulative GPA. Lucy will be attending the University of Kansas, focusing on chemical engineering next year. We wish her the best of luck, and we are so proud of her. She has impressed me from the first day that I met her virtually because of COVID, and she still continues to impress me every day. Pfister.
Okay, congratulations. I want to take a quick second now that Deanna's told us she's retiring. Don't go away. I did not know, not retiring, but stepping down from the President of the NEA. So I wanted to thank you for always being professional, diplomatic, you're, you've been caring about your coworkers, and you step up all the time, you are everywhere. You put in a lot of volunteer hours yourself throughout the district. So I think that we would be remiss if we didn't acknowledge that. And we appreciate the way you fearlessly advocate for your coworkers, but you always keep a good relationship with everyone around you. So thank you, thank you, thank you, and good luck.
And happy birthday, Deanna. Happy birthday to you.
Happy birthday. Okay, open period for patron comments. I do not believe we have anyone signed up, so we will move on to student achievement, Melville High School.
All right, so you saw a little bit earlier, you know, when we had our students up here, we kind of talked about our year in a nutshell and highlighted our students, both our four seniors as well as some staff members. So as we move into the remainder of our presentation, we want to start by talking just a little bit about who we are here at Melville High School. So you'll see some of our enrollment demographic data on the screen right now. Our enrollment for the last four or five years has been pretty consistent, right around that 1,500-student mark. Ever since redistricting, that's kind of where we have settled in and held right there. In the center, it talks a little bit about some of our demographics. You see our students who qualify for free and reduced lunch, as well as students that either receive special education services or English, English language services. Kind of a unique thing for us is that that number is about the same, same number of our student body. Our diversity is very important to us at MHS and something that we highlight on a regular basis. We have an international club that holds meetings each month and has opportunities for students to come and attend and learn about each other's culture. You'll see the languages that are represented at Melville High School, with Bosnian, Arabic, Vietnamese, and Spanish being our four largest. And something unique to us is our mobility rate, our students that join us maybe midway through the year. And it's important that they feel just like everybody that started the year with us, that they have a place here at Melville High School, that they fit in and connect with one of our clubs or organizations. And we're just thankful that we have so many caring staff that are willing to sponsor those events and get, get students involved. So as I shift gears and look at our staff data, you'll see on the left-hand side with that pie chart, our, our staff in their different degrees, over 80% of our student, of our staff have an advanced degree, and of that group, 37% have multiple advanced degrees. So, you know, we appreciate the fact that they dedicate a lot of their time outside of school, going back and taking additional coursework. And what's not represented in that chart is the additional just PD opportunities that they seek out and find so they can bring back engaging and interesting topics and strategies for their classroom. Two charts on the right just represent their years of service, service, both here to Melville High School as well as the district. So, I'm sorry, as well as in education period. So we've seen in the last several years, the opportunity to attract candidates that have had experience coming from other districts, which is an exciting opportunity for us to bring in different ideas and kind of meld them into Melville High School. And then we are excited about the right side, the staff that have had 15-plus years, and you know, honestly, a lot of that, that group ends up being 25 or 30. You know, we had over the last two or three years, you know, close to 10 or 12 staff members who retired that had 28-plus years in the district and at Melville High School. And kind of a neat story with Melville is some of those staff members, that when they retired last year, their children are now at Melville High School as first or second year teachers. So we often say, once a Panther, always a Panther, and it's just great to see those alumni. We've talked about some of these board meetings that Grow Your Own program, so to see some of those alumni back in the building is awesome.
Next up, we'd like to talk about our math data. So I'm going to start by talking about the, one of the two charts, looking at that EOC chart there on the right, and then we'll hit on the iXL data. So when you look at that Algebra I data, I want to note that when you're looking at the 22 school year, that blue column, you're looking at the data representing about 80 of our students who took the Algebra I EOC. The reason for that is, is that our math team determined that students may feel better prepared to take their EOC if they were to do it in the fall of their geometry year. So when you look at the 23 data, what you're seeing is the data representing over 299 students who took that Algebra I EOC assessment. And so when we were looking at those scores this year, our Algebra I team was very reflective. And they started off in August by looking at their curriculum and looking at the priority standards in EOC data, and they really broke down where those priority standards are and ensured that it going into this year, the curriculum was hitting on those priority standards more than just one time. To pair with that, we also created our EOC intervention program this year that serviced over 320 students at Melville High School. With that, our algebra team specifically was working with algebra students on those priority standards to determine where are our students falling short and how can we help them to learn the content that they need to learn to be proficient in all of our Missouri Algebra I standards. So with this, we saw 80 students receiving services from anywhere from one six-week session to occurring six weeks through six times throughout the year, where those students were coming back and getting continuous targeted support in math. When you switch gears and we'll look over at the math iXL data, looking at specifically that ninth grade range, you can see the growth from the fall to the winter. Of those students' growth, the students who participated in our EOC interventions, 63 of the 80 students showed growth from the fall to the winter data. And this is just a snippet of what we're excited to hopefully see with our iXL spring data that should be coming out here pretty soon, as well as our EOC data, which our teachers are wrapping up actually this week. So we're excited for the future of what our math scores will show and really proud of the efforts of our math teachers this year.
All right, so up here, we do have our English Language Arts Benchmark and EOC data. If we can first take a look at our STAR benchmark data on the left here, you are going to see the benchmark data for the past three winter STAR assessments. One thing that we're very proud of, currently in the blue for our most recent assessment, almost 50% of our students scored in the at or above benchmark categories. And one thing that we're also proud of with our STAR benchmark is that you're going to see that red Urgent Intervention Group, that is a downward trend line for our STAR benchmark. So that is one thing that we're very proud of for our ELA department. Then we also have our ELA II EOC data there on the right. One thing I want to draw your attention to, if you look at 2022 versus, or I'm sorry, compared to 2023 EOC data, you're going to see that we have students that scored in the advanced and the proficient categories increase for both of those for 23. And then we also have the basic and below basic, our student scores decrease for 23, which is a great comparison to see how much work we've been putting in for our ELA department. Also, as Ms. McCowsky mentioned, we also have our EOC interventions taking place. We had about 79 students that participated in the ELA interventions, really focusing on those priority standards and the skill set. So we're excited to see, hopefully too, with our 24 EOC data that they just took, that both the advanced and proficient will also increase from the 24 assessments. Thank you.
The development of our B SIP goals this year were based on a lot of the feedback that we got from staff throughout last year, as well as looking at data and then wrestling with that with our leadership team. And so we came up with these four goals that act as the cornerstone to a comprehensive improvement plan. You can see one of them is focused on student academic achievement, one on student well-being, one on improving staff growth and development, and then also just maintaining a focus on college and career readiness. So with academic achievement, as was mentioned before, we did implement the intervention process this year to help some of those students who, who were, had a gap in their learning that we identified. And then we also had an emphasis on data teaming this year as part of the PLC process as well. We implemented the ACT Prep course that we're looking to expand this year to help try to improve some of the ACT scores that we had talked about last summer. Student well-being, we've noted the connection between sense of belongingness and then academic achievement in our building. So MLT spent the majority of the year this year looking at student panorama data, figuring out what are some strategies that we can implement, what are the trends that we see, what, what demographics do we see are, is our building not serving well? And then what can we do about that? This year is year one of a three-year grant that we are having all of our sophomores trained in mental health first aid. They will be, the sophomores are certified this year, as well as the sophomore TAP teachers. This will go on for three years, so in three years from now, three out of four of our classes will be certified, and then we're going to then try to renew that grant and make that something renew each, every three years. The CCR, College and Career Readiness, a huge emphasis this year on our counseling team to really help make sure that all of our kids in TAP are completing their ICAP so that students could take a look at what their future careers could possibly look like. And then the Choice Program that Dr. Lander will probably speak about a little bit as well, just to help them figure out what is, what is right for them moving forward. And then finally, none of this is possible if it's not for the, the hard-working staff that we have. And so the Panthers Present that Abby spoke about earlier, those strands were directly related to these goals right here. And that is something, these goals are something that we're really proud of, but more importantly is the steps that all of our staff, every employee in our building took to try to make, to realize these goals as well. Thank you.
All right, so for probably the fourth time tonight, we'll talk about how proud we are of Panthers Present. But thinking about things that we're excited about for next year, Panthers Present was something that our staff really valued this year, and that 98% strongly agree that that day had an impact on their class, that's a hard number to reach. And, you know, it just shows the value of what we did with our professional development this year. And one of those goals is always for us to be investing in those futures. So taking that, our goal for next year is to try to replicate that process. And so our goal for that PD plan for next year is to try to create more opportunities for our teachers on those half-days to share their best strategies for, and learn from their coworkers. So that's something we're super excited about. And that leads into some of the data teaming process that we've really worked on this year and been specific with, where our teams have professionally developed, really just amongst themselves through the collaboration process of data teaming. So this year, our EOC tested courses specifically, we're tracking standard data on a formative assessment and then looking at the growth of it on a summative assessment. And so those EOC courses throughout the course of the year have tracked all their priority standards and tried to measure and set goals for growth for students to target their instruction in their classroom. Next year, what we're excited about with this process is that that's going to expand to all of our teams with the goal of all teams being able to look at formative and summative assessment data to make goals as a team and provide the best instructional strategies possible for our students to help continue to show growth. And with that is connected that enrichment process, which this year we've called our EOC interventions. Our goal for next year is to create an opportunity for all classes to provide that intervention or enrichment process for their students so that they can use that time to go back and target student skills and reteach or enrich when needed.
Last piece up there are our student programs and opportunities. Proud of the fact that we have so many choices and options for our students to participate in, which is why that ICAP, that Individual Career and Academic Plan that Brian spoke to is so important. Students start working on that in middle school and really try to use that to map out their high school time, to make sure that they're taking advantage of all the different things, whether it's early college, whether it's CAPS, South Tech, our PLTW things here in the building. So want to make sure that students really can get a good broad scope of everything that they're interested in to plan what they want to do after Melville. So thank you guys for giving us the opportunity to share just a little bit about our year.
Thank you very much, and thank you definitely to your staff. I love seeing all the progress you guys are making, and there are lots of questions on e-boards that people have already asked, but I just want to ask one quick question, even though we're not supposed to do this. Can you explain a little bit, your intervention that you put into place, can you give us a little glimpse of what that looks like and like, who's doing the interventions?
So it's our teachers within those EOC courses or in those EOC departments, so in Biology, English 2, Algebra, and American Government. So those PLC teams that have created the summative informative assessments are then looking at the data and seeing where students are showing growth or where they may need some additional support based on those individual priority standards. And then they're having students come in during our advisory time during that TAP program for roughly, you know, it's been about four to six weeks. We've kind of adjusted that throughout the course of the year based on teacher feedback to practice those skills. And what we're seeing is, like in Biology, for example, it wasn't just students coming in and redoing some of their biology homework, the biology teachers in that program were doing additional labs to try to, you know, kind of hit home on those, those skills or those, those concepts. So we were seeing that in all four of those tested areas. So we had some of our general education staff participating, our special education staff, and our interventionists were all part of that process.
Fantastic. That's, that all, that, I'm so excited to see the extra work going in and to help the kids that are struggling and slowly but surely.
Yeah, that was a great team effort, and really Abby led a lot of that. And this year, today, this morning, they were having kind of a recap of, okay, here's what, let's, let's reflect on this year and have some good ideas as to what that'll look like next year, just trying to make it better.
All right, great. Thank you very much.
And before they sit down, in December, the board approved an extra assistant principal at each high school. Sarah Gray is here, and she's going to be joining that team. So I know many of you know her. I just wanted to, you're welcome.
We are definitely very appreciative to add to our team. I think that's going to do tremendous things for our staff. And we did tell Sarah just to watch on YouTube and enjoy, because next year she'll have to be here, but she was insistent, she wanted to be here tonight.
All right, well, great. Thank you. Next is Scott McMullin with Scope.
Hello. One of the first things I want to celebrate is probably the most important thing about our school is being able to create a positive learning environment. I'm a firm believer in if you have a positive learning environment that's nurturing and it's safe, you can accomplish a great deal. And I think that's a testament to what our staff brings every day. In the first chart, we took our SEL panorama survey, and obviously, most of our students are challenged with self-regulation or emotional regulation. And so we noticed that we took probably six or seven of the most important skills, and what we wanted to do was to highlight what we wanted to emphasize. And so our overall goal was that we wanted students to improve their SEL survey scores by a minimum of 5%. As you can see by that graph, they've more than doubled and tripled that in many aspects. One of the things that I love about our staff is that they're very proactive, we're very forward-thinking. And so in years past, we've taken these surveys, emotional regulation has always been one of the factors that they struggled with and why they've been referred to us in the first place, even our Missouri option students. And so we started implementing Y-TRY, which focuses on self-regulation, identifying triggers. And so that setup is like Mrs. McKelvey, Mr. Boyd, and then our social, emotional interventionists, they all co-teach a lesson per week in which they focus they all co-teach a lesson per week in which they focus on self-management, controlling anxiety, and forming positive relationships. Another cause for celebration is our decrease in discipline because that goes hand in hand. As you can see, 2014 through 2017, we averaged almost 400 discipline referrals per year. Then a snapshot of 2017 to 2020, we lowered that to 140. And then from 2021 until now, we, over that three-year period, is a 30, 30 discipline referral average. So that's significant growth. And as a result of that, our students are able to focus on their academics more. These are some of the things that our students have had to say about our Y Try lessons and just our program in general. We have a consortium school, so some of these students that have been, that were interviewed and made these statements, some of them were from Afton, some were from Lindbergh, Bayless, Melville High School, Oakville High School. But as you can tell, many of them allude to the Y Try lessons on SEL. And then they also talk about how being able to control my emotions have made me a better student. I've had parents that have talked to me when they've dropped their child off or if they've called and, and just shared that even their home lives are better because their child is able to self-regulate, and they're not stressed out about coming to school because it's not a stress or a distraction. Our enrollment, we service around 200 students a year on average, and this is just a breakdown of the schools that are needed. As you can tell, we're Melville High School East Campus. We should rename ourselves because about 46% of our students do come from Melville. And then another 25% come from Oakville High School, and then 28% come from Afton, Bayless, and Lindbergh. Lindbergh contributes about 20% of that, Afton about 5% to 6%, Bayless around 2% to 3%. And then all the districts in our consortium, like Rogers Middle School at Afton, and also Berkeley are our main contributors to that 1%. As I mentioned earlier, most of our students that come to our school is not always disciplined. A good portion of it, 75%, are there for our Missouri Option program. The other 25% are there for alternative reasons or placements. This is an overview of what Missouri Options is. It's a program for students who are deficient in credits. They have to be a minimum of 17 years of age or older. They also have to have the state requirements out of the way as a normal graduate. But in addition to that, they also have to pass the HICEP, which is a battery of tests in the areas of math, science, social studies, reading comprehension, and written expression. They have to score a certain amount on that. And then once they've passed it, which is a 45% or 45 total battery score out of 100, and then once they've achieved that, they have to work 30 hours a week. If they can attain that during, until the time of their cohort graduation, then they are considered a graduate from whatever high school they're referred from. Our Missouri Option graduation data, as you can tell, after COVID, you know, it really did increase. Right now, we're at 87 students, but in years past, we've averaged probably around 100 students that have completed the program. We have about a 90% graduation rate through Missouri Option. And that's really amazing considering that the students that are in that program, before they're enrolled, many of them have no chance of graduating. And it's just a testament to the work that our students put in, but also just the amazing staff that I have that work with them on a daily basis. And our Scope community, I mentioned that we've really worked on positive school culture, our academic achievements improving. Now, we really want to focus moving forward is the college and career readiness. Most of our students work 30, 40 hours a week, but we also want them to be mindful of not just having a job, but a career pathway. In this photo, we, Mrs. McKelvey, our counselor, did a great job of, of creating a relationship with the South County Carpenter's Union. And so they've invited our students to come back and explore different career pathways within those professions. And we want to build on that and start establishing more job shadow opportunities and internships, and also going to some of the community colleges, colleges that have the non-degree career pathways as well. So moving forward, we want to focus on career pathways in addition to also keeping our social-emotional learning interventions in place as well. There's a picture of our, our staff, a very close-knit, very family-oriented type of, of environment, and our students really thrive in that type of setting. That's it for us.
Okay. And congratulations on the referrals, what was it called specifically? I forgot. Of discipline is just phenomenal, obviously. You know, you are changing lives of these children, and that's just, it's just what we're here for, right? And so, like I said earlier, you're the best kept secret in our area for these students.
Thank you. I appreciate that. And I do want to give a shout out to Melville, their assistant principal especially, because they have students that don't qualify for Missouri Option because you have to be able to read on a 12th grade level. And so we have math and reading interventions four times a week. And so they have students who are maybe behind in credits in their classes and they're trying to get them into Missouri Option, but they don't score high enough. So we allow their students to come over, they work with our reading and math specialists, and they get the coursework and the skills that they need to build that up. On the flip side, we have students from Missouri Option, and they've allowed them to run track, be involved in choir, also being in some of the organizations for international students as well. So it's been a really great partnership, so.
Yeah, that's fantastic. And, well, you know my story about running into a parent at Costco one time, and I was just so flabbergasted that he recognized me and he thanked me profusely for your program because you saved his child, so.
Well, thank you. I appreciate that.
That is just my takeaway from Scope, so thank you, thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you for your employees.
Thank you all.
Okay, next is governance. A Prop S update, Steve Wendell.
Good evening, Board of Education. My name is Steve Wendell. I'm the Melville Construction Manager, and I'm going to be given the Prop S update tonight. So as our, our first slide, we have the completed projects. We are, you know, over halfway through Prop S in both schedule and spending. So we haven't added any new completed projects to the list tonight, but we've got a big summer coming up, and our goal is to add between six and seven projects here onto the completed list in the next three months here, so. Okay, Beerbaum Elementary, Beerbaum Phase 2. This is our largest project in the, out of all of Prop S, really by a long shot. So this will add the, the entire back end of the Beerbaum School on with library, classrooms, music and art rooms, et cetera. So we've been working on this for a while. We have now finished our foundation walls, so the whole perimeter of the foundation is complete. We've started pouring the floor slab. We've got about a third of that square footage complete. And starting next week, we're going to be getting some structural steel onsite and start swinging it into place very quickly thereafter. And then finally, at least for this month, we're really gearing up for, on the first day of summer, we're going to be mobilizing into the existing part of the school to go fix the rest of the sprinkler piping. We did a portion of that last year in the front half on Beerbaum Phase 1, and we'll be finishing the school this year, the, the whole back half of the hallway. So we're gearing up for that on day one of summer. Point, I told you last month, the teachers' room and the bathrooms are complete. We'll also add the nurses' office. We just got temporary occupancy for the nurses' office just in the last week. We did get our office furniture delivered, so that's all installed. And then, as you know, we have the two items that we're reworking, the fire doors, we've finished our shop drawings, they're now being, entering the fabrication phase, and the same for the handrail out back, the ADA handrail. We did get that ordered, we got all the shop drawings done and approved, and we're starting on fabrication. Both of those items should be around the July timeframe for delivery and installation. Fordor, Fordor's really one of the, the big summer projects, but this is one that we could get a jumpstart. We got this space a little bit early from the school. They were able to give us the space, and we've really finished a, a good chunk of the work. So we've got the demo mostly, mostly complete, except, with the exception of some of the stuff that we have to wait for, to happen over the summer. Framing and drywall, as you can see in the picture, and, and a lot of the painting is in process and a lot of it's done. We did get our casework delivered, so those are all being installed. This is just a picture of the secretary's desk in the office. So that's all in process as, as well as the electrical work, so. Fordor is along, you know, well on the way. That same, in that same contract, we are also working with the same contractor on Beasley Elementary, and we're basically took the same approach. We went into Beasley, we were able to move one person and basically get a jumpstart on that work. So we've got a lot of the demo complete. As you can see, we even, we took down the, the wall that was not fire code compliant. We've already rebuilt it. We've already got the drywall on. The painting is, is just starting also in the next week. So again, on Beasley, we're doing what we can before the school year is over, and then we'll be really jumping out into the rest of the vestibule in the summertime. And then this is the list of schools that are also on our summer docket. Woolwind, Oakville Middle, Berkeley, and Mosaic. All of these projects, we've not mobilized yet, but literally on day one of summer, we're going to be jumping on each one of these schools, and we're, we've got our plans ready to go. And like I said, it's going to be a very busy summer. You can see we've got a lot of projects on the docket, and there's going to be a lot of things happening this summer. Okay. And then our final projects, Washington is out to bid right now. So we'll be coming to you at the next board meeting with a proposal for, an approval for the Washington project. Troutwine should be going out to bid by the end of next week. So it's a little bit earlier than I told you last, last meeting, and that's so that we can get also a jumpstart. We'd like to get in there a little bit before the end of the summer, but that'll be going through the fall. Both of those projects will be basically going throughout the fall semesters. And then Mosaic Phase 2, which is the elevators, that's the ADA scope, you know, we're delaying that till next summer, but we, we have looked into it enough and started the design on that. And looking at the, the schedule for the delivery of the elevators, we're going to be trying to go for that as early as possible, just so that we can make sure that that is all delivered and onsite, ready to go for next summer. So we might even try to beat that September bid date. We're still working on finishing the design right now, and then we're going to be going out to bid as soon as we can afterwards. Okay. And finally, the finance sheet. I don't know that there's a big update here. I've mentioned that we're much, much more than half of the money is spent. I talked about the schedule as well, and I guess I'll pause if there's any questions.
I had, at Fordor Elementary, is that where the desk is, the picture that you have? Is that the current footprint of the office? Is that where the, the old office was? I mean.
No, no, this is the new office. This was a classroom just a few months ago.
Oh, okay.
Yeah. This is the new office, this is the new construction, and that, like this casework, this secretary's desk just got delivered.
So when you walk in, is it to the left or the right?
Yeah, when you walk in, it'll be to the left.
Okay, that's that, because that's where there was a classroom?
Yeah.
I was just curious. All right.
Very good.
Anybody else? All right, great. Thank you very much.
Have a good evening.
Okay, next is budget development, Marshall Crutcher.
Good evening, Board of Education. I'm Marshall Crutcher, the CFO, and I'm presenting the preliminary budget tonight. So you've got two, two pieces of, two documents. If you take the thick document, which is a budget excerpt of the bigger package that's on e-boards, that's what I'll be talking about tonight mostly. So I would go to the budget message section on that document, go to page one of the budget message where it starts with the executive summary. So basically, you know, when we get to the end of the whole budget process, we'll probably have a 100-page budget document, and that's a lengthy document to read. So if you just read this executive summary out of the entire budget, if you really understand all of the points in the executive summary, you're going to have a very good grasp of the fiscal year '25 budget. So I'm going to go over these points briefly. Point number one, it just is the same as last meeting. The fiscal year '25 operating net gain still stands at zero with the excess funds going to the capital fund, so there's no change there. When we go to item number two on the executive summary, we spoke throughout the spring about being about $8 million behind pace of our tax collections, and we would have to wait until we got to May or June to find out where we stand with that. Well, if you've read the financial statements, you know that we caught up a lot of the $8 million, but we caught up about seven of that million, 7 million of the 8 million. So we're still at about a $1 million shortfall, and basically, that means that not only did protested taxes double, but so did unpaid taxes increase as well. So unpaid taxes increased by about $1 million. So that pushes the collection rate down to about 96.2%. Year after year after year, it's really amazing how it's pretty consistently at the 97.1% range. So with this unpaid tax amount pushing the percentage down, we're going to have about a $1 million shortfall this year. That's why you'll see the forecast net loss for this year of fiscal year '24 is around $850,000 net loss now because of that shortfall. So the big question is, what do we do on the budget? So we're going to take a middle-of-the-road approach on budgeting fiscal year '25. We're going to budget the normal collection percentage of 97.13%. And then it's possible that most or all of those unpaid taxes, that extra $1 million, could be collected next year. And if so, then we'll have a favorable budget variance. It's also possible that maybe the taxpayer trend will continue the exact same, and we'll end up with a 96.2% collection next year. If that's the case, then we'll have an unfavorable budget variance. So it's really hard to predict right now which way that's going to go. So in the fiscal year '25 budget package, for right now, the assumption is we're going to use the normal historical percentage, but we're not going to count on the shortfall unpaid taxes this year to be paid next year. Like I said, it's a middle-of-the-road approach. Then we go to the next point, number three. And I've got words up here, sometimes pictures are a little bit better, so that second handout that I gave you, the three-page handout, I would turn to the third page on that handout. This is what we discussed at the Finance Committee meeting just two days ago. Let's see, yeah, two days ago. Lost track. So anyway, this is talking about prepaying debt principle. So when you look at the chart, basically, one of the decision that we need to make in August of this year is really what we're going to levy for the debt service. So we started off with Prop S. We started off with a voluntary reduction of 12 cents. That offset the debt service levy of 12 cents that we needed for Prop S. You net the two, it's a no-tax increase. So then along comes Prop E, and along with, Prop E, just as we know, changed a lot of the way the tax calculations work. Well, one of the things it did, it turned that voluntary 12-cent reduction into a permanent reduction. So the initial plan was, we're going to have a 12-cent reduction offsetting the 12-cent debt service levy. Over time, as your AV increases over the 20 years, you, you probably will decrease your debt service levy to maybe 11 or 10 cents or so. And as you decrease that, you'd also decrease the voluntary reduction, you know, always keeping them to offset the zero. Well, when Prop E came along and it turned the voluntary reduction of 12 cents into a permanent reduction of 12 cents, there's no flexibility there. We also had the unforeseen significant increase in AV. So, you know, you think a number of years out would be when you start reducing your debt service levy from 12 cents to a lower amount because your tax. debt service levy from twelve cents to a lower amount because you're taxing on a higher amount, so you're getting more dollars. Well, because we had the significant inflation and everything, significantly higher AV, projections say that we probably, the best estimates right now is we would probably only need nine point six cents of the debt service levy to pay the principal and interest. So the decision really in August is, do we levy the nine point six cents and just pay the basic principal and interest, or do we levy the full twelve cents and use that extra two point four cents to prepay the principal? If we levy the extra, if we levy the full twelve cents, that would result in an estimated prepayment of six hundred and twenty-five thousand dollars of principal, and that prepayment would then save the district over the course of the loan, or the debt, that would save about two hundred and eighty thousand dollars in interest expense. So that's really the decision. As we went through and had discussion with the Finance Committee, they unanimously endorsed having the full twelve-cent levy to do the prepayment of principal and realize the interest savings. As you go down real briefly in the bottom half, there's a future decision, that won't come up this summer, but if you levy the full twelve cents, it then offers a future decision down the road, possibly, well, it's just future discussions and decisions to basically figure out what you want to do with that two point four cents. You have a lot of flexibility, and that's really a discussion for another year. So that's really, in a nutshell, what the point number three is talking about on the debt principal repayment. Then we get to point number four. And this is just to, you know, be aware, in fiscal year 26, that real estate tax freeze that has been passed, that's the first year that that would really take effect, but right now in the budget, there's no revenue reduction for that because we simply lack sufficient data even, to even make an educated guess on what the impact would be. There, there are many thoughts. It's, right now even, you know, there's a lot of people out there that aren't even sure that that's going to even go into effect in that fiscal year. It just depends on many, many things. So this is an uncertainty, it's a risk. You know, there could be no impact, we could have, you know, ten, fifteen million dollar impact, five million, it's wild guesses right now. We really have no idea what the impact is, so it's an uncertainty out there of what that's going to do to our revenue. We know one thing, it won't increase it. It'll either be zero, or it'll be a decrease. Then point number five, just a reminder, fiscal year 26 Prop A, that ends after fiscal year 26. It's an eight hundred and twenty thousand dollar tax levy right now. It's worth about three point two cents, and we use that mainly for roofing. It's a restricted use. You can use it for several things, but mostly right now, it's been used for roofing. Will that be renewed or not? So that's another uncertainty. Then point number six talks about capital funding, and so we talked about the last meeting and, and sort of touched on, really, the net operating gain is set to break even, and then additional money is then put into the capital fund. As we talked about that last meeting. So when you look at what we had going into the capital fund in fiscal year 23, it was nine point four million dollars, and then in fiscal year 24, we have twenty-three point three million dollars that is going into the capital fund, and then in fiscal year 25, that drops slightly to twenty-two point one million by setting the operating net, the net operating gain to zero. And in the forecast, trying to do the same thing in future years, fiscal year 26 capital would be twenty-one point seven million, which is down from the twenty-two million in fiscal year 25. Fiscal year 27 goes down a little bit to nineteen point eight million. Fiscal year 28 goes down to seventeen point three million. So you're seeing decreases. If you hold the operating gain at zero and keep that constant and put all the rest in capital, you're seeing that that capital amount decreases slightly. But that's very, very, very unpredictable because there's many things that can happen from year to year, and I'll say all the time, be careful about looking at the forecast. It's, it's just a wild guess, and things will change as government funding and freezes and Prop A renewals are going on. A lot of uncertainty, so you have to let the dust settle if you look out more, really more than fiscal year 25 budget. All of those other things can change a lot. So that's sort of how the capital schedules will look once you, once you look at the capital schedule detail. Then we get into point number seven. That just gives some basic tax benchmarks. And then we get into the finance dashboard on number eight, and that's what we have really every month in the financial statements. And just as a reminder, the district tax rate is eighteenth. The operating expense ranks, operating expense per student ranks twentieth out of twenty-two, and the debt per student ranks twenty-first out of twenty-two. So we're, we're better in our tax rate. We used to be, you know, dead last or twenty-first, and now we're eighteenth, and that certainly helps. But when you look at the capital schedules, we'll browse that in just a second, but when you look at those capital schedules from year to year through fiscal year 28, you'll see that there's line items in there that, we don't have anything allocated specifically, but we have large amounts, and right now, the best filler for that is the unfunded Prop S projects, because we had two hundred and thirty-seven million dollars of projects identified, and we only did thirty-seven million. So when you look at the detailed capital schedules, you'll see over forty million dollars over multiple years, over forty million dollars on those unfunded Prop S line items. And that's what we'll be looking at to get more detail. But I would think that with two hundred and thirty-seven million dollars of needs identified, there's a lot of very good prudent projects to be able to tackle with that money. And I think these dashboard numbers showing twenty-first in debt per student, twentieth in operating expense per student, it shows that that's why we have needs for catch-up. And so all of this money, if we, if we don't have, you know, too bad of an adverse effect on some of these uncertainties we just talked about, we have a potential capability of catching up on these things. So anyway, that's, that's the main thing on benchmark. And then on point number 10, just quickly on staffing. As you know, we had, of the thirty-four SRF-funded interventionists, we retained nineteen of those. We eliminated the at-home program. We added the two assistant principals. We reassigned one of the at-home staff. So the net reduction of staff is a net reduction of thirty-one. And that sort of leads into the last point on number 12, health insurance. Health insurance is usually a big expense, and so this year, it's sort of going to net close to a break even. We had, on one side of the ledger, we had a six percent rate increase for January of twenty twenty-four, and we're right now budgeting an increase of thirteen percent for January of twenty twenty-five, but we'll have to see how that plays out and how the claims experience works out for this calendar year. Those increase expenses. We also had a general fund transfer this fiscal year from the general fund to the self-insurance fund of one point three million dollars. Next year, the hope is to, and budget is, to transfer six hundred and fifty thousand dollars instead of one point three million, so that would be less expense, and then the thirty-one reduced staff is less expense on the health insurance side. So when you net those, you come close to a break even. But those are the key points on the budget, and the only thing I would say is, I'll just flip through really to the capital, just so that you sort of get an idea of how to look at the funding. And if you turn to your capital section in the big bundle, I'll just highlight a couple numbers. So in fiscal year 24, near the top, you should see two numbers circled up near the top. So in fiscal year 24, we've got tax levy of twenty million four twenty-five, and then the transfers from the general fund at two million eight fifty. You had those two, and I've got penciled notes on there that says it's twenty-three point three million. Hopefully you see that. And then on the next page, those same two buckets, they add up to twenty-two point one million, slightly less than the year before. And then you go to fiscal year 26, and you'll see twenty-one point seven million, that's slightly less. And then the next page, nineteen point eight million is less, and then the next page is seventeen point three million, that's less. See, you get the idea that, you know, you're losing ground a little bit each year if you have constant conditions. And then the other factor is, what do you do with all the uncertainties? So with that, that's, that's really the highlights of the preliminary budget. Are there any questions?
Hey, Marshall, I've got a couple. Now, going back to your, the handout, page three, you talked about Prop A. That has to go back to the voters to decide.
Sure, yes, absolutely.
I just want to make sure that that's a stress point, because since you put April, I assumed as much, but I wanted to make sure.
Yeah.
So if we don't, so if it goes back to the voters and it's renewed, then we can start using that two point four cents you were talking about to generate five point six cents towards--
Yeah, that would take a ballot. If, if, and that's one, I mean, that's just one option. To renew Prop A, first of all, you have to have a ballot, but then what do you specifically want to do? Well, there are many options. There'd be many discussions with how to really, what to even consider and how to go about it.
So we're not limited to what was on Prop A? We're just limited to the tax levy amount that's on it to decide if we're going to renew it or not?
Well, the one, I mean, Prop A will end--
Right.
--unless there's a ballot to renew it.
Right.
And to renew it, then there's, there's a lot of options to go about doing.
But the specificity of what we would do with it depends on what we put on the prop versus the actual amount, because the amount will either go away or it'll be renewed. But we can specify it, what to use that three point two cents for, if we specified on the prop, if we put it on the ballot in April of 26.
Right.
Right, yeah, well, that's what he proposed. With the two point four cents, we would change back from doing additional debt service, rolling it into that five point six cents, and then lean it towards a possible bond.
Right. You can, you can do a bond, you can do a restricted capital use similar to Prop A now. There's several, there's several considerations, so you'd really want to sit down and have some discussions.
Right. And of course, with the legislature doing what it does, they're trying to make sure that if you go through and put essentially a zero tax change, that it has to be specific language of you're removing a three point two cent levy. If you don't, if it doesn't pass, then your tax rate will drop by three point two cents. If it does pass, it's going to be a net zero change, but they're going to get specific about the language, whether that actually ends up going into the law or not, not this year, the way things are going, so.
Yeah.
But as I saw, we, when we start looking at the decrease in the capital that's going in, obviously, we don't have projects driving that, so that would obviously change that amount. We would need to start putting in the capital fund depending on what we get into 26, 27, and 28, right?
Well, I think that the thing is, right now, while we have those amounts potentially available going into the capital fund, the discussion would be, should we use those for a lot of the unfunded Prop S projects?
But as you're going through, you obviously have, you know, roofing is going to be a regular thing.
Right. And I've already got the, what on our replacement schedules, because in the big, thick budget package, you're going to see, there's a replacement schedule section for buses, roofing, IT equipment, food service, things like that. So on those capital schedules, I've already put in, you know, what we plan on doing specifically for HVAC and specifically for roofing. So those amounts are already in those future capital uses.
Right. But theoretically, by 26, we should be a lot further ahead, because we'll have gone through the three phases of that ten million dollar capital side project for doing HVAC. So by 26, we should probably have less of an HVAC need by the time we get through the end of that point.
Well, you'll, you'll see what's on there each year. It's, I think that, there's still, I think, a big chunk here in 27, I believe.
Yeah, because, yeah, I see 26 with John Kerry Blades, Rogers Chiller, Trotwine OMS, WMS, and OHS, and then--
Yeah.
Twenty-five being Bernard the Pool, OES, Woolwind, and Point, so we at least have those scoped out.
Yeah, fiscal year 26, we still put six million dollars into the HVAC reserve, and we have like seven different HVAC projects. And then I think the final piece then is in fiscal year 27. When you look on that schedule, you'll see three HVAC projects and only a million dollars going into the HVAC--
We, you know, twenty-nine hundred LEME in the various phases, and then--
Right.
--Whittle, and, yeah, so we obviously have stuff that we know what we can tie to that amount, so at least we've got stuff planned out to the end of fiscal 27.
Right.
So I appreciate having that forecasting, so at least we know what's coming for this budget as well as the next couple.
Yeah, and you'll see the LEME building pieces in those years as well.
Yeah, thank you.
So, Marshall, I'd like to just clarify that with these anticipated regular scheduled improvements that we have all the time, just like the buses and the HVAC and the roofs and everything, that if everything, we know that nothing goes as planned, but if things kind of stay middle-of-the-road like you're, you suggested here, and we use the, these tax levy options going forward along with some of the remainder of the Prop S funding and what have you, that we can see some daylight in the potentially, and I want to get this on the record, then I continue, this is still on my mind, a new transportation building. Is that something that we can just at least think about now?
Well, that would be in the, so one of the things that, yeah, when you look at all of that unfunded Prop S, that's going to be requiring a lot of conversations of really, first of all, we need to have the dust settle on our current Prop S projects, because we still have several that aren't even bid yet. But as the dust settles on that, and we see how the funding is from the government and the tax freezes and all that, see how much of this capital money would actually be free, and then really start having a methodology of discussions to identify what those projects would. The transportation building would certainly be in the discussion. I don't know if it would make the list in the final analysis, but it certainly would be in the discussion to be considered.
Yeah, but I think theoretically, by the time we get to September, October, November of 25, we should pretty much have everything bid out, figure out what we have left, and then start aiming towards the Prop A scenario for April. So by the end, by September-ish, October-ish of next year, we should have a good idea of what's left, what we can start theoretically contemplating and move forward from that.
Yeah, I think Dr. Hogg will probably start this process, you know, this summer, but I think, yeah, this fall, we'll get a better picture, but we'll start looking at this stuff this summer.
Yeah, because Mosaic Phase, you know, Phase Two being the elevators is the last one we have left to bid, and then by the time we get to next summer, we should obviously know if there's going to be overages and the like, plus we've gotten everything else pretty much done, so we should have a good solid idea of what the money is by that.
Right. I mean, parking lots and the transportation building alone--
Right.
--that could eat up twenty-five million dollars right there.
Sure.
So that's why, you know, I think the main takeaway is, when people are looking at these amounts, it looks like a lot of money, forty million plus. That looks like a lot of money, but when you've got two hundred and thirty-seven million dollars of projects, and you only did thirty-seven, there's, there's a lot of good projects out there to consider.
That's for sure.
Do we have any vision for potentially bringing our steering committee back together to outline a list of preliminary projects that are part of the forty million possible unfunded Prop S projects would be?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
I figure the last time, it took eighteen months to go through that process again, so--
Well, and then we went through it again when we had to make cuts, so now it will be refreshing to get back together and add some things back in, so thank you for that. Regarding the debt prepayment on the twelve cents and using the two point four cents for debt prepayment, I just want to verify, that decision to prepay debt will just need to be made in August, and it's separate from approving the budget, correct?
Right, right. When you approve the budget in June, that will not lock in anything on the prepayment of debt. That'll be a separate approval process. That'll be a separate approval process. And there's actually like three legal documents that would have to be approved by the board. There's a defeasance resolution, there's an escrow agreement, a direct deposit agreement. Those all have to be approved. None of this can happen without those legal documents being presented and approved by the board.
And as far as the actual tax collection percentage for fiscal year '25, do we have any idea when we would know what our final numbers would be in terms of whether it was back to normal or still low, or what's that?
Yeah, unfortunately, it, it could possibly be next May or June before we're going to know that. A lot of it depends on, you know, in January, do we see the normal amount of protested taxes? Or do we see a continuing large amount of protested taxes? What is the collection in December, January compared to this, you know, this last year? So we'll look at trends, but if those trends don't clearly show things, then you're stuck with waiting until May or June to get the final picture.
Plus, we're also making the assumption that AVs sort of stay where they are and they don't suddenly nose dive. And we won't know that till, you know, March-ish of '25 when we start getting initial assessments back. And that may change what we do with that 9.6 cents because it might need to be more, it might need to be less.
Right. And that's, that's another point, is that the 9.6 cents is an estimate. You know, we won't know anything until we get the July preliminary AV, and then the final is in September when you get the final.
Yeah, I mean, we saw how much, just the initial, initial one back in March versus July, there was a significant drop-off as we know. So I wouldn't be surprised if we had more of the same this coming calendar.
Right.
I have one other question. With the self-insurance fund budgeted for $650,000 transfer from the general fund next year, plus the 13% budgeted rate increase, do you have a projection for the fund gain or loss for calendar year '24 and '25?
Well, right now, it's going to depend on, right now, we're looking at 21% claims increase for year-to-date right now. This is the third year in a row that we've started off in the spring with like a 30% increase, a 30% increase, and now a 21% increase. So, you know, we try to get to, I think it was maybe around a half a million dollar projected fund balance loss this year, if, if the claims had been, I think, around 10%. But we're looking at, right now, the trend is 21%. So in fact, you know, I've got discussions right now with USI. They're looking at utilization through this point in time and doing some digging and analyzing and trying to figure out where they think we're headed. And month by month, we'll just have to see where we're at. But USI says all across the board, all their clients have major increases, and the pharmacy cost is what's really driving this across the whole nation. So, you know, this, this is, this is extremely concerning, and I don't know what all organizations are going to be doing year after year because none of these organizations can take 20% annual increases. It's just, it's unsustainable. So for right now, we're just looking at this year, trying to figure out what the best course of action is. But I, I do not think, you know, that budget of 13% and the budget of $650,000 transfer, it will not be any less. It could be more.
All right, anybody else? Okay. I do want to thank you, Marshall, for always staying on top of all these financial situations. And, I mean, just advising us tonight about the 12 cents and the opportunity to basically save, what, $625 in debt plus an additional $280,000 in interest, which, you know, saves a lot of tax dollars for the district. So I just want to say kudos to you for identifying those things and bringing them to us early so that we have time to contemplate them and talk to the finance committee about them. So thank you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Okay, next is advocacy committee update, Jeff Wolman.
This will be the last one of the legislative session, and I'll hit on three points. One of them was Senate Bill 727, was signed by the governor last week. So we now have this unfunded mandate potentially coming up for at least the next calendar year and beyond. And we're not even sure if the funding that's in place will actually be able to fund what they proposed because Desi has said more than once that there's likely the great mother of all supplemental budgets coming because of a lot of low-ball estimates that were done in the budget. So it's in the books, we have to see what to do with it, and then just go from there. But there's some benefits out of it, but obviously the expansion of charters into Boone County, which means Columbia, Missouri has to deal with that little scenario. But the fact that ESAs have been expanded and there's some changes to how funding formulas are done, there's a lot of work we're going to have to do to see how this all pays out. The other item being, the budget actually was completed on time. They got it done a few hours before they had to, but they did it in sort of an odd way. It showed up a week late from the House, and there was a lot of sort of discussion between the two budget chairs that was done in trying to figure out how to actually get it all dealt with. They ended up saving or cutting about a billion dollars out of what the governor proposed and what the House had proposed. But a lot of it was done essentially just multiple days of conversation between the two budget chairs, and that's normally done in open session with everybody able to discuss and contemplate what's going on. By the time the vote was done on the Senate on Thursday of last week, not a lot of people had time to see it, not a lot of time to go over it, and there's a lot of consternation from people about not really having a good time to review it, and this is not how you try and put together a $52 billion budget for the state of Missouri. So I'm hoping that they go and take some benefit from how not to do things and make it a more transparent and clearer process for everybody. And it's likely to be something they're going to do in the summer to fix some of these goofiness. Gene?
Yes, we have tentatively set our legislative breakfast next year for February 22nd. Last year, it was kind of spontaneously set during spring break, and, which is why we had a good attendance. This year, it was again set during spring break and used more or less as an excuse why the several legislators could not attend. So we're going to get off the spring break weekend and try a different date, and hopefully that will set us up a little better for a little bigger attendance. And also, we're going to try to include a little more interaction between the legislators and some student activity and teachers and here on, on campus in the form of, for example, Q and A's between students and legislators that are prepared in advance and perhaps showcase some of our MyPath students' works with displays similar to those that we had set up just a few weeks ago here in the gallery. So it should be very interesting, and we're going to, you know, get those, save the dates out really early, like in the fall, so that, you know, we can start getting our responses early on and encourage a bigger attendance by hopefully all of the legislators that cover our school district so that we can have them all here and, and see what we have going on here in the Melville School District and hear our voices. So that's the game plan. And while I'm at it, anyone who would like to join our team and be part of those who are interested in knowing what's going on, good and bad, in Jeff City to affect our school district, we could always use your help. And it doesn't take a lot of effort. If you can write a letter, if you can make a phone call, if you could, you know, it doesn't take a lot of legwork. It's, you know, it's certainly something that anybody can do. So if you're interested, please go to our website, Melville School District website, and there's a tab called advocacy. I think it's just
Right, it's off of, if you go and look up the Board of Education.
Board of Education and then advocacy. And if you just check on there, and it'll tell you all about how you can help. So thank you very much.
Yeah, the big item, that's the one that's probably been on the news the most, is the things that have been going on in the Senate. There's a bill in the Senate, that started in the Senate, Senate Joint Resolution 74, which changes the initiative petition process. Because our legislature has an amazing talent sometimes of just not being able to get things done, the populace takes it on themselves to basically put together initiative petition and make a change to the constitution of the state. So that's how Medicare, Medicaid expansion happened. That's how legal marijuana for both first medicinal and then recreational was put in. So what was proposed is changing the way that's done. Normally, that's put in, you get 190,000 signatures, you submit that, it's put on the ballot, and then it's voted at 50% plus one vote. And if it's, hits that threshold, it's enshrined in the constitution. What's being proposed is changing that to make it, it has to pass in five out of the eight federal House districts across the state. And if you look at some of the numbers for population, you can see that Missouri is very lopsided population-wise in a number of areas and sparsely populated in another. The math is basically the fact that you could have 23% of the state decide if an initiative petition measure goes through. So this has gone back and forth between both sides of the legislature. In March, the Senate basically did a 21-hour filibuster, which stops everything from going to try and remove an item out of the, out of this measure called ballot candy. It's basically something that's added to a bill to make it attractive for people to vote on, and whether it's true or not is a good question. The two items are whether illegal immigrants can vote, which is not allowed because it's in state constitution, and whether foreign entities can influence an initiative petition, which they can't by federal law. So these are items that you don't need to put in a, in a piece of legislation. The Democrats have basically filibustered to get it removed. It was removed, sent to the House. The House put it back in. This week, when it was coming up for a vote, there was a 50-hour filibuster that was done to prevent this from being put forth, which means nothing gets done in the Senate. Anything in the House that has to get approved by the Senate doesn't get done. It basically logjams the works until they decided they were going to send it back to the House to have them review it and do what's called a conference, where the House and the Senate come together and discuss things. Today, the House basically decided, no, we're not going to do that, sent the bill back again to the Senate, and most likely, nothing's going to happen with it tomorrow. The Senate, in fact, had the equivalent of two different temper tantrums from a couple of different members because they were doing something, and after five minutes of discussion, they said, okay, we're going to go take a break till lunch, came back again, more of the same, five minutes of discussion, they threw it in for the day. So there's one day left to do legislation in the Senate. Most likely, nothing is going to get done tomorrow because of this problem. And after having like 2,300 pieces of legislation that have been filed in both House and Senate, 35 of them passed, 18 of them in the budget which have to pass. If you do the math, that's not really a high percentage of efficiency in our government right now. So after 6:00 PM tomorrow, nothing gets done until they decide to put either a special session out or do it again next year. So this is government inefficiency at its highest, and it's for some ridiculous reasons.
All right, thank you. Let's move on to action items by consent. Does anyone need to pull anything? I need to pull D. So if I could get a motion to approve action items by consent, A, B, C, E, F, and G. Does anyone have any discussion?
No.
Okay. If I can get a motion to approve, please?
So moved.
Second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Motion carries 5-0. If I could get a motion, please, to approve action item D.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed. Abstain, me. So 5-0, or 4-0-1, sorry. Moving to closed session.
You don't have any comments?
We do not have any comments. So if I can get an authorization of closed session?
Do you want me to read it?
Sure.
Motion to enter a closed session meeting for the purpose of reading of minutes of previous meetings and corrections and approval of the same and other items under the Missouri Statute 610.021, subsections 1 through 21, and 610.022, subsections 1 through 6, hiring, firing, disciplining, or promoting particular employees. 610.0213, preparation for negotiations with employee groups. 610.0219, and individually identifiable personnel records, performance ratings or records pertaining to employees or applications for employment. 610.02113, legal action, causes of action or litigation. 610.0211.
Okay, Jeff?
Yes.
Tori?
Yes.
Peggy, yes?
Yes.
Grace? Okay. If I could please get a motion to adjourn?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?